Select board to order on Monday, November 3rd, 2014 at 6:30. First item of business I want to point out is there have been a few rearrangements of the schedule and a couple of minor items added. They're highlighted there. Our treasurer cannot be here tonight for his report, so we moved some things up. We've added a report on the issue with the salt shed in the DRB. I've added an item for us just to discuss budget priorities, and there's going to be an executive session to discuss a real estate issue. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda tonight?
No.
Approval of minutes. We have minutes from October 20th that had my edits in them. Did anyone have any further edits to those? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as edited?
Motion to approve the minutes of 10:20 as edited.
Second.
Second. We have a motion to approve the minutes from 10:20 as edited by Mitch, seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Warrants. Just one?
Yeah, just one. The general warrant, the payroll warrant will be at the next meeting. There was an issue with it that had to be corrected and couldn't be before tonight's meeting.
Okay. This is check warrant number 10 and the amount of $61,439.88. I move we approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mitch, seconds. Major items on this one are William Barney Construction for a total of close to $30,000. Three items. Is that part of White Creek?
Only the first one is part of White Creek, the 1488, which we'll get 80% back on. The 25477 is a whole list of roads that's in there. It's all gravel, stone, a lot of road work they did. It's actually over a month's worth of billing in one shot there. And the other one is, again, is just odds and ends, stone for different roads. They've laid, put down a lot of stone in the last six weeks.
All right, we've got 1949 to Shasbury ID. And let's see, that's this, that must be school tax?
Yeah, both of these are Benton County taxes. The 11059 and the 1948, part of the county tax.
Okay. We have our sheriff's bill for 1912. Green Mountain Power for 1,087.
Yeah, that's all streetlights, that one.
Is this part of the retrofit?
No, that's what we pay on a regular basis for the lights. That...
Used to seen them split out in little bits like this?
Yeah, usually they send us a bill for every single meter we have, so...
Oh, every light has a meter?
Yeah, yeah, we get like, we get like eight different... So, this is a big grouped up one for the, for the streetlights. But that, that is in progress, that grant for that, well, the application through Efficiency Vermont. Green Mountain Powers is putting together the inventory now. When they finish that, we'll get a copy of that, and I'll go up to Efficiency Vermont, and we'll move to the next step.
Okay.
Hopefully, they'll cut this in half.
6494 from TAM. And those are the items over $1,000. I move we approve check warrant number 10 for $61,439.88. Do we already, you got that? Okay, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Check warrant is approved, 5-0-0.
We have three more warrants up there. The...
The little ones.
Oh, there they are, hiding behind my computer.
We have reimbursement, it looks like, for David Kiernan in amount of $400.
That actually went to petty cash. It had to be written to me so I could, so I could cash it to send the guys on their road trip to Maryland.
Okay.
Because we don't have a credit card, so they had to have cash coming with them. So that's all gone into petty cash, and they were paid out of petty cash, and it was reconciled out of petty cash.
Okay. I move we approve the petty cash supplement in the amount of $400.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? We have check warrant number nine in the amount of 250560, $2,505.60. I move we approve. Is there a second?
That's with landmarking.
Second. Seconded by Mitch. This is line marking on White Creek Road. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries.
Yeah, we needed to get that in to get our money back in the state.
And we have another check warrant number nine in the amount of $30,000 to Santander Leasing. This is a truck payment?
This is the truck payment. What's happened is Viking, who's putting the body on the truck, announced that the truck would be six to eight weeks late. DeLory has given us the truck already, which we've delivered to Viking, and they need to be paid. So what we did was we, Santander has forwarded to the leasing company on escrow the full amount. This allows us to pay DeLory for the truck, which we're already in possession of, and that should take place on Wednesday. And the rest of it won't be accepted until we see the body on the truck and Terry inspects it.
When is that expected to be here now?
Well, that's the problem. We're hoping for now mid-December. They started off suddenly by saying it would be January, and we're like, it was supposed to be this week. We're trying to work on that. They have a problem getting part of the body apparently delivered to them from wherever they manufacture it, but I didn't want to hold DeLory up on, he's giving us the truck, so we've actually had it for nearly three weeks.
I move we approve the check warrant for $30,000 for the truck payment. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. Did I get them all?
That's it.
Announcements? Does anyone have any announcements?
I've got one. The Christmas, the annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony will be on December 7th this year, that's a Sunday, at 4:00 PM here at Cole Hall.
Okay.
Norshaft Lions are providing the refreshments. Ken Conratt will do the honors.
Santa gonna be here?
Santa will be here, I think. They're working on it. Long ways from the North Pole, but we'll get him next time.
Any other announcements? Are there any public comments? All right, we will move into solid waste implementation plan. David?
Okay, we had a meeting in Bennington, the, all the towns that are involved in our current SWIP. We had a consultant come in to advise us in the direction to go, although there's some preference to have a district. A district requires an awful lot of work, all the way up to putting it before the legislature, having it approved by the state attorney general, and a number of other items that would take quite a long time to, to move this forward. So what we're looking for is an alliance where all the towns, including Bennington, would get together and try and make the solid waste district alliance work better in handling hazardous, household hazardous waste and the implementation of Act 148. There's many things that have to fall in place between now and 2020. This is a mandate from the state that we have to manage somehow. I like the idea of us all working together on this and putting, putting a group together. What we discussed and decided at the meeting was to have what's called a joint survey committee, which each town in the, in the alliance, or proposed alliance, would appoint a member to. Each town just having one vote for this part of it. And this part would solely be to investigate how to set the alliance up, how to determine the individual voting rights within the alliance, because obviously we have a very large town, Bennington, and some very small towns involved, and how to balance the population to give everyone somewhat of an equal voice in this. Many things to be discussed along those lines. But it was suggested that we have something along the lines of basically a board of directors, one, one member from each town who would go through this process of getting this established. Each thing, when the final plan, like the next meeting, it's planned that we'll have different, different SWIPs and different alliances, there are copies of their organizational structure brought into us. We'll hammer out an agreement where all the towns are satisfied, voting rights and everything else. Each member will bring that back to the select board of their community, and it will be decided whether or not to go forward with that. If, well, we'll have to see if the select boards are, all go along with it, we're on the road, if there's problems with, with several boards, we'll go back and try and hash something else out. But I think we're on the right track to getting this going by having, you know, a member from each board appointed to this, or a member from the board, or whoever the, you know, sometimes with managers, they're going to have the managers do it. But, you know, whoever's appointed, one person, go up, hammer out this alliance, bring it back to the boards for review, and then get this going. The, the long, the long-range goal is, this has to be in place by July next year. It requires education programs in the schools. It requires changing a whole lot of things that simply we're not capable of doing individually as towns, and we need to have some guidance in doing it. So the goal would be to also hire a contracting company to manage this for all the towns in the county. Whether that's hiring a BRC again, as in the current situation, and they would find the subcontractors to do these things. You have to have education programs for the schools. Certainly, that's not something we're going to be taking on. We'll have to hire a consulting firm to do that. And that's kind of an integral part of making 148 work, because you have to start educating kids from the, you know, it might take a generation for all these things to come out of the, the waste stream. But there's many aspects to it, and it needs to be done in a more coordinated, centralized...
Because the education in the schools is more of the separation of the organics, and don't throw the spoons in with the stuff, and that's...
There's, there's a whole section on what to do and how to do it. It's kind of like any campaign, like using seatbelts or stopping smoking, you know? If you have to get it into the schools, you have to change it by generation to get the whole thing really to work and educate people as they come up. And again, because it has to rotate between the schools, it's not something that we can really get involved in, you know, as individual communities. It would be cost prohibitive, too. And someone has to design this, and it's, it'd be easier for it to go another way. We do not have, what BRC is doing for us is they're preparing a resolution for each select board to nominate whomever they're going to nominate to represent them at, at the alliance meetings. That hasn't been received yet. They're working on it, so by the next meeting, we'll have to nominate someone to represent the town at the alliance. And I think that's a good way to go about it. To sit down the eight or nine towns, hammer out an agreement that works for everybody. It's good everybody's on board with this, Bennington, Manchester, Dorset, everybody sees the needs, so I think it'll, it'll work out. But unfortunately, we don't have the wording for the resolution tonight, so on the 17th we'll have to bring that up, but it'll give some time to, to think about it a little bit.
Okay. Mitch, you've been going to these meetings. Do you think you'd be willing to be our representative at this alliance formation process?
Yeah, for the time being, yeah, definitely. I didn't make the last meeting. I got called into a production issue, and I was six hours sitting there, right past the beginning of it and right past the end of it, so I didn't get a chance to go to the last one.
Certainly, if anyone else is interested in that, we can have you and Mitch duke it out to...
Alternative?
An alternate?
Alternate, yeah.
Okay, you want to be an alternate?
Sure.
Okay, great, all right. We'll have that ready for next week.
Yeah, because also after, after this gets up and running in July, and a contractor's chosen, the, the alliance itself would meet, you know, quarterly or so, because we would have someone in place to run the nuts and bolts of it. But, you know, there's things that might change, and there's so many things to be decided, but there will probably be a number of meetings leading up to the, to the passage.
All right, thank you, David. Item number nine is lease of town property on Buck Hill Road opposite Cole Hall.
The property across the street, it's a small part across the street, it's been leased to Mr. McCarthy. That lease is expiring in, I'm sorry...
Lease from Mr. McCarthy?
Lease to Mr. McCarthy. For the town owns the property. It's this little parking area in the little garage right here. He's leased it on a long-term lease at the rate of $300 a year. That is expiring January 2nd of next year. I believe he's seeking renewal of this lease. The only thing of, of interest really is that the property's up for sale. And I don't know if we just want to lease it and have those rates go forward. I don't know where we sit with that, or, I don't know, even if the town's interested in considering selling it, if there's a new property, or interested in buying it.
The town is selling the land?
No, 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 we own the land. We lease it to Mr. McCarthy right now. It's my understanding he's seeking a renewal of the lease. I don't know if we want to consider selling the land, as it's been leased for so long, or we just want to enter into a new lease agreement, and as the property's up for sale, I would suggest running it by Wilmington's office to see about, you know, if we lease it to the current owner and it sells.
Oh, his property is for sale?
His property's for sale?
Now I understand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to confuse you. His property's for sale, and I know there's been activity, so if, it's just a question of what do we do here?
So is that just for parking for the house on the corner? Is that what it is?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a little dirt patch across the street here. It's not a substantial piece of property.
Blacksmith shop.
Yes, it's exactly what it says in here, the old blacksmith shop and that.
So the question is, does the lease go with the property, or just to the current owner?
If we re-sign, yeah, if we re-sign this lease with him at the current rate, or any rate you decide, and move forward with this, just legality, but just moving forward to a new owner, or does the town want to consider selling the little piece of property across the street?
What does Mr. McCarthy lease it for?
$300 a year.
I mean, for what, per parking?
Just parking.
Apartments? Oh, parking for those apartments?
Yeah, that's, that's all it is. It's just a little patch of stone over there.
Uh-huh.
It's a little bit bigger than that, but, but that's essentially what it's there for, is just for him to park the cars that are in there. The place has been refurbished and is up for sale. I think there's three, or maybe four apartments in there. I'm not sure what it is. So it's just something to, to think about. It doesn't have to be acted on immediately. The lease goes to January 1st. I'm sorry, January 2nd. It's something we can think about and bring up in the next meeting, because I can have it reviewed fairly quickly as a legality, and talk to Mr. McCarthy and see if, what we want to do about it. If we want to just re-sign it at the same rate, or...
And we're leasing it for how much?
$300 a year.
$300 a year? Any comments from anyone about that? I'm not sure what to think about it.
I think we should, should renew the lease, but I think it's also rather important that the lease stay with the property, because if he sells this, that makes it more, more valuable to the person he sells it to, saying, I've got, at least got a lease for people to park their cars.
Well, yeah, but it's a transfer of property. I understand what you're saying, but I, I mean, they just have to come and negotiate a lease with us, you know, and change the names on the lease, because it'll be different names on the lease and everything you can. I don't know if we word it, we don't know who we're going to leasing it to, whoever buys it. So they'd have to, I, I think they should have to renegotiate the lease, but I don't think it'd be a problem, I mean...
Well, that's what I was wondering, because this is a 10-year lease, this one. I could run it by Wilmington's office and say, just the facts.
That might be a good idea.
Yeah, we will renew for 10, or we're considering renewing for 10 years. What happens if the property sells? Do we have to do anything, or does it just go with the land?
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's something we won't talk about.
It's really a real estate law question, you know, so...
Yeah, seems like we ought to think about it. I mean, if it's gonna, if the new owner's going to keep it as apartments and just wants it for parking, we're probably inclined to go along. If the new owner wants to do something else with it, we might want to think about whether or not we want to lease it or not. And we might want to think about selling it.
I was going to say sell the land.
Well, why don't I get, for the next meeting, why don't I get what it's assessed at? Probably isn't even much, so we know how much it's, you know, how much we've assessed it at.
Yeah, do we know the acreage or the square footage we're talking about? I think I know, I think I park there regularly myself. The area, it's like six parking spaces or something like that.
It doesn't actually say, it talks a lot about how it was measured.
Not very big.
No, it's not very big. This gentleman could probably tell me what all these rods and things mean here, but...
It's less than 10% of an acre.
Yeah, it's, it's very small. It's not much, but anything.
Does anybody know how the town came to own that little slipper of land?
I can remember the blacksmith shop.
Yeah, I can remember that, too, but I don't...
I don't know how the town ended up with it.
No, I don't either.
Okay.
Because I'll find that out for the next meeting, and I'll send this down to Wilmington, too, and see what, see what he thinks of it.
We have finished item number nine. Would anyone have an objection, objection to letting David start his town administrator's report while we wait for 7 o'clock so we can start the, the hearing at the official David, you want to start what you have for us?
Basically, we did get a letter, and Chris, I have a copy for you, from the Federal Emergency Management Agency about the floodplain maps. They apparently are advertising on the 5th and next week to begin the 90-day appeal period for the municipality and anyone who feels aggrieved by it. I just got this today.
Are there new maps that have been issued?
This is, this is based on the ones that first came out in 2010 and 2011. These are the old D firms that came out. Yeah, we have them. For some reason, they've just got, like I said, when I just received this today, that they're going to advertise after the second advertisement date, which should be November 12th, will begin the town's 90-day appeal period and the appeal period for anyone who feels they're aggrieved by it. So what I'll do with this is I'll try and get something on the webpage, right when you open up the webpage, that, I'll kind of summarize this, that if you're in one of these zones and you want the appeal, or want the town to appeal, you need to, to move on it. And there's requirements for this, too. It isn't just an appeal, you have to have reasons, specific reasons to do it. But we can get into all that if, if someone needs to appeal, and we'll pull out the, the maps that have been here for a few years, and people will be able to come in and inspect them and see where the property lies. There aren't, unless I'm wrong, Chris, there aren't that many properties that are really affected by any of these changes here. Most of them that are in it have known that anyway, so it shouldn't be that big an issue for here. But we will start that as it's here. Let's see. We do have coming up the budget meeting on the 17th. I was going to have a budget I'm going to send around to each of the members. Hopefully, by the end of this week, I've been putting together a few things. I have numbers for health care that I'm going to send around. Also, there's virtually nothing out there as far as changes. I've spoken to everyone who's covered in the town, and everyone's happy with what they have. The prices that came in are seven to eight percent higher than last year, which compared to the state, which is as high as 17% higher. I don't know how that happened, but ours are not that bad. And there just really isn't anything out there with a single payer looming in a not-too-far distance. It might be best just to stay put where we are and see what, see what transpires next year. There'll be a few other things. I've spoken informally with every, every person who has an apartment. I have, the fire chief will be coming in later in the week, so we can go through, through his completely. So far, there's nothing, there's no major item out there. Well, like I said, I have, I have a complete thing I'd like to finish working on and send out to everyone for this weekend, and all the health information, and we can review that. And on the 17th, if you'd like, we could start an earlier meeting, have a little budget workshop beforehand. I think we'd be even be ready to, well, maybe we'll just do a budget workshop with, with us talking, and then the following one on the 1st, we can have a good number of all the department heads come in, breaking it up. The major, the major issues really are beyond the budget here in any long-term thing that we want to get involved in, what priorities we have. We can do a lot with the budget this year. And looking down the road, again, many of our leases expire after the payments in the next fiscal year. It frees up a substantial amount of money. The debt reserve, debt payments are going to go up this year to a little over 253, I believe it is. They start coming off rapidly in 2016, and then more in 2017 come off. So it's an opportunity to look at putting money aside, like Art had mentioned a few weeks ago, building up reserves so that we don't have to finance these large amounts all the time. But right now, we are covering, carrying a lot, but it does start drifting away rapidly after next year, which, which is very good. In what I've spoken to with, with people, there's nothing really major coming up from any department. There's a paving request, we'll get into, we can get into that. That's about it. Everyone that I've spoken to, we can, we can move this along. And I do have a lot of numbers, and I worked through, I've actually worked up the whole budget, and I'll send it along, just to give us a starting point. And then, as I speak to other, other department heads, you know, we'll tweak a few things. But again, I think we can make changes in a variety of areas. And one thing that goes off is the sidewalk is paid for. I mean, that money was allocated this year to finish the round-the-block, so that's, that's coming off, too. So if we can look at the 17th, maybe start at 5:00 PM and have, give us an hour and a half to go through things, or just 5:30? I don't know if we'll need that.
What's the board's pleasure? We're starting at 5:30?
I'm just basing that on what I saw before. We could, we could probably start at 6:00 and cover a lot of this. When we have the people come in, it's going to be a lot longer. We could just cover what I send you on the 17th in health care, the expenses with that, and that's, that would probably take a half hour, maybe go over into the beginning of the meeting. But if you, I'll have it all here in advance, so we can, we can narrow it down to focus questions, and then just have a general idea of it.
What about starting at 6:00 and do half hour of budget discussion before a regular meeting on healthcare? I like that idea.
And that, that's really it for me. I don't, not, not much to go on about.
Okay. Your timing is almost perfect. We have less than a minute before 7:00, so unless anybody has any jokes or stories they want to tell, we'll just wait for our official start here, and then we'll move into the hearing. Mr. Moffett?
Yes. Over by Art's house there, there was a bald eagle up there in the tree. We could go last Friday.
I think about this time last year, I saw one or two of them. I saw one down by the paper mill on, on the way into town.
That's the first one I've seen in a while.
I saw them a couple of times last year. Another time, I saw one just up in the air, soaring around, which was really crazy.
Yeah, I've seen them up high, a big bird, and I wasn't sure if it was a turkey buzzard up there, or an eagle, or what.
Yes, yeah. Well, last year, I definitely saw a white-headed raptor. I'm pretty sure it was a bald eagle.
I don't know why the eagle reminded me of this, but we had discussed a change to the website for the proposals and bids, so I don't know if you want me to go into that.
Well, we can start this now. Bring it up again after the hearing, because right now, we're, we've made it to 7:00. And so at this time, we will move into our...
And so at this time, we will move into our public hearing. We are holding a public hearing on proposed zoning bylaw changes. We have four zoning bylaw changes we're gonna ask the public to approve on the March ballot. We have with us two of our commissioners and it looks like a few members of the public who are interested in these issues. And so our purpose here tonight is to explain what the zoning changes are and to receive public comments about them. Let me bring up the ballot language that the select board voted on a week or two ago for the proposed bylaw changes. And I think we should probably take them one at a time. We'll start with the zoning bylaw change in the hollows. See if I can also bring up the map because it's...
Brokers.
Pardon? I, I got the map from...
Jim.
Jim Henderson. And I thought I put it in the folder. Let me bring it up.
Not quite.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Usually I don't have any trouble, but I don't know if my eyes are under better. I know. No, not quite. That's awesome.
Here's the map of the proposed zoning bylaw changes in the hollow. The, the blue and gray striped area are the proposed changes here and here along Shasbury Hollow and Granger Hollow roads. The proposal is to move the, what was forest and rec, this, this hatched area was forest and recreation zoning in both of these. And the proposal is to move the forest and rec boundary north to the 1,400-foot contour in both places where currently it follows a property line contour here. The, the ballot language that will appear on the ballot states, shall the voters approve a change to the zoning district map involving lands along the northern ends of Shasbury Hollow Road and Granger Hollow Road? The change would move the southern boundary of the forest and recreation, FR District, northward toward the 1,400-foot elevation contour in two places. Zoning in the two areas would change from forest and rec to rural residential 200, RR 200, with a minimum lot size of five acres.
Our planning commission chairman, Chris Williams, is here. Chris, would you like to give us a little background on this for the sake of the public? I think we're all, all of us up here are well aware of what's been going on here.
Okay, sure. Planning commission was approached about a year and a half ago by Chris Hines, who's sitting next to me, longtime member of the planning commission in Arlington and consultant on Woodland Services is the name of his company. He deals with rural properties all over the county and maybe further. Anyway, he was representing a group of landowners in Granger and Shasbury Hollows. There were reverberations of a zoning district map change that had happened back in 2000 that people weren't happy with. This had come before the planning commission a few times previously that people felt it was arbitrary. And so at his behest, we went out and, after studying the maps in great detail, went out and did field visits, at least two, if I remember, walking the properties, looking at the gradient, the, you know, what the development potential of the land was and, and what was there already, which was there were a certain number of non-conforming situations that had been created by the zoning change in the year 2000. People were living year-round with power and septic systems, which is not allowed in the forest recreation zone. The road access seemed reasonable, the ability to get fire apparatus up there, even in the toughest times of the year seemed possible. You know, ambulances, whatever, emergency services. It's presently plowed. And the land in Granger Hollow is a little less accessible presently, but it has that potential in that it's not steep slopes, it's relatively level land in the bottom of the valley there as the valley narrows going up north toward Arlington. And we felt that reverting to the 1,400-foot contour would be a happy medium with modern GPS equipment, even a smartphone, you could find the 1,400-foot contour easily. The land is easy to describe. Chris Hines submitted subsequently a build-out analysis of the site showing that there was only one potential site in Shasbury Hollow, but potentially 13 in Granger Hollow where land was more level. And so that, we felt that the, you know, given what was there now and what could potentially be built after it passes through the next couple of regulatory processes with the town and the state to get building permits and wastewater permits, that it was reasonable to upzone this into an RR 200, five-acre lot situation and open up land that showed signs that it had been settled historically in earlier times.
Very good. Thank you. Bill Pennebaker is also a commissioner. Bill, do you have anything to add?
No, I think Chris has covered it very nicely. Thank you.
Okay. So any members of the board have any comments they'd like to make about the zoning, proposed zoning change?
Is, is there any problem, before it, it followed property lines. Now it follows contours. So does that split some property?
It didn't follow property lines before.
Oh, okay.
In fact, it cut, it followed a property line here and a property line here, and then here it cuts across property lines. And here also, this isn't a property element. There are some, some property lines, that's not a property line, and that's not a property line.
Okay.
I found some, when I originally researched the, the reasoning behind those lines, I was, wasn't able to find any real justification for it. It was the only deviation in, in the, in the town that deviated from this 14-foot, 1,400-foot contour that was previously, it was actually part of the motion. The motion that the select board approved to change the zone said 1,400-foot contour, but the map showed what, what's there now.
Okay.
So the landowners I'm working for are seeking to correct what they think was a mistake in including land that would otherwise be developable in the forest and rec zone. And I, I got started on this whole issue when I was hired by Glenn Nilson, the owner of this parcel, 112 acres. And I did soil testing about here on the property and found an acceptable site for a septic system. He wanted to build a camp with full facilities. And I found after getting a state septic permit that the, the land was in the forest and rec zone. So then I started contacting some of the other landowners that also had issue with the subject. And rather than, I, I approached the design of the zone just as the BRCRC would do it, by doing a slope analysis first to determine what limitations there were on the land, and then presented that development study to the planning commission. Like Chris had said, we visited the sites in the field and they agreed unanimously it was a reasonable change, not to put it back in two-acre zone, but to make a four-acre zone there, similar to what's on the east side.
Five-acre zone.
So it's kind of a transitional zone from a two-acre to, to the forest and rec. And the, the landowners that I've been in contact with on this subject are satisfied with that approach.
So it will split some properties?
What it does is it, it keeps the lower slopes of these large properties in, in an area where some, some limited development is possible.
Yeah.
This parcel is over 400, almost 400 acres in size, and it was deemed totally undevelopable by the previous zone. This leaves a, a small portion of it eligible for some limited development.
Okay, yep.
Also, by way of public comment, there was a letter received addressed to the board from Dennis and Karen Guinea. It reads, "We are members of the Norseman Shooters Club and we want the Shasbury rezoning passed. We as a club want the right to be able to build cabins with water and septic for each, for each share in the club." It was dated October 2014. Any other public comments involving this zoning change? Mr. Moffett?
Yeah, there in Shasbury Hollow, you have two houses that were built before the zoning change, when they made it all forest and recreation. There was two year-round homes. There was Mrs. Curran's property, which was called the Old Madison Camp. They named it. That was built in 1965. Mrs. Forrest, her house was built in 2000, and they changed the zoning in 2002. March 5th, they voted on it. So, and there's a meeting, I don't know if Chris remembers it, but Jake Jablonsky was asked about it. And, yeah, August 14th, 2012. Mr. Jablonsky, who was on the planning commission at the time of rezoning, explained that this was done, done to exempt existing housing. That's the reason they went the lines they did. But it doesn't hold any truth to what Jablonsky said because you have forest and you have Mrs. Curran's property. There are houses there.
Excuse me, Mr. Moffett. He's talking about Jake Jacobowski, if you understand the reference.
But it, it's correct that this change would, would correct that situation.
But you throw yourself into another thing because the town voted in 2002 to lower forest and recreation from 16 to 14. And how somebody got it snuck through is if you check, excuse me, there is the 1,600-foot line right, right there. So you've got RR 80 going up into about 1,650 elevation line. Excuse me.
I, I looked at that, at that anomaly when I was making a recommendation to change the zone. And because the land is so severely steep, it didn't, it seemed that physically it's undevelopable. So the fact that whether it's RR 80 or, or forest and rec, I don't think makes much, makes that much difference. It would, it, it made for a very complex map change if I went to correct every mistake I found. So, yeah, I would consider that a mistake also, that they chose to follow a property line rather than follow the contour when the motion clearly stated that they were, they wanted to follow a contour. But for, from a, a physical standpoint, that land isn't developable whether, no matter what zone it's in.
So why not put what was RR 80, put it back to RR 80? And if it doesn't meet the standards, then you can't build on it, right? Because that's what you just said about that little...
Well, my original proposal to the planning commission was a request to take the, the land that's hatched there now and revert it to RR 80 because it would've been more consistent with what the initial land was. After analysis, the planning commission decided that they would prefer to have a lower density in that transition zone. And we acquiesced it wasn't, because it wasn't going to affect the, the needs of the clients involved, whether it was five acres or, or two acres, it didn't seem to matter to the people who, who I was working for. I could see why that isn't necessarily the case with everyone.
Because like Curran's property, what you call the Old Madison Camp, where that starts, that's 1,080-foot elevation.
Right.
Okay. So they own 7.15 acres of land. You make it RR 200, they can't sell it. They can't sell a chunk.
It's not developable anyway because you got the river running through it. There's no land that, I, my, in my professional opinions, Curran's land is not subdivisible by any means because of other limitations rather than acreage. You got, you have floodplain along the river. So that's what I took into account.
The argument didn't take the, the field that bad. In fact, I don't think it touched the field. Did a job on that cove there, but it...
Any other comments from the public on this proposed zoning change?
What if, have you ever been approached by the Building Wild people?
I haven't. Chris, have you been approached by the Building Wild people?
Oh, I know something about this. What's your point?
Well, it's just, they build these camps in these like unbelievably inaccessible places.
They're free to do that under present zoning. They can build in forest and recreation zone provided that it's a seasonal camp and doesn't have a septic system.
Right.
So that should be no problem for great designers like the guys from Building Wild.
Okay, just curious.
I own a camp that fits that description at 2,200-foot elevation in the northeast kingdom. So I know something about the subject.
All right. Well, the, the planning commission has proposed this change. The select board has approved ballot language for this. I believe it's the case that the select board worded up to us would approve this change. I believe we, we endorsed this change. I haven't heard any comments otherwise. Now would be the time to make them if you want to join the public debate about that. So as a reminder, it's up to the public to approve this zoning change. And so we're having this hearing to put the word out. And we hope everyone at home is listening and is, our hope is that they're inclined to approve this change for the benefit of the people who are affected.
Could you state for the record when, when the vote may take place on, on these zone changes?
This will take place on, in the, on the March ballot, the day after town meeting. I don't have that date in front of me.
March 3rd.
March 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there another public hearing or is this the only one?
This is the only one that's required. We could certainly have more hearings to help get the word out. And I think that's probably not a bad idea. We don't have any more scheduled at the moment.
Yeah, there's none, there's none required. I was considering putting this and Chris's notes on all these on the webpage so that people would have access leading up in the months before and getting the word out closer to the election. So it doesn't fall into the background with everything going on over the holidays.
Yeah, that's, David and I have talked about this. That's kind of our philosophy is we wanted to get the, the official hearing done and out of the way so there's no more impediments to, to having this happen for the people that have been asking for it. But for informational purposes, I think... But for informational purposes, I think probably as part of our regular select board meetings, when we get closer to the vote, we'll have more informational meetings to help get the word out.
And if anyone doesn't have, anyone at home doesn't have access to a computer, they can stop at town hall and get copies of Chris's brief summation of why these changes are taking place.
I think you should also make available the exact wording of the proposed changes.
Yes, they'll be combined, they'll all be there.
I mean, it's all a little long, but some of them are very short and succinct, too.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Okay, the second zoning bylaw change involves home occupations. It reads, the ballot language will read, "Shall the voters approve change to the zoning bylaws involving home occupation? The change, changes affirm home occupations as a conditional use and define limits on the building area that may be associated with home occupations."
Again, Chris, would you mind giving us a little background on this one?
This is our second crack at it. The first attempt, the select board sent it back, saying that there were flaws that we should correct, that opened the door to unlimited area for home occupations, and this could be detrimental in residential zones. And we agreed and reconsidered. And we feel like we've tightened it up now to the point where it's pretty clearly defined. In the end, it's a judgment call at the Development Review Board, because it's a conditional use. But we've tried to make it as specific as possible, so that they have clear guidelines to go on. We've solicited the DRB's opinions on our language, generally positive reaction. Few people said they abstained from commenting because they had to enforce it. Basically, it increases area available in outbuildings, limited by, now I'm doing this from memory, I think it's 1,200 square feet. And defines the percentages of main residents that can be attributed to home occupations, and requirements for parking, signage, screening, blah, 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 all the stuff you would expect through zoning, and compliance with the sign ordinance. But as a conditional use, the Development Review Board should consider the amount of traffic a particular use will generate, the amount of parking required for it. So the town has pretty good latitude to look at it on a case-by-case basis. It's not a one-size-fits-all.
Thank you, Chris. Any comments from the board about this zoning bylaw change? Any comments from the public? Okay.
One quick question. Now, this wasn't just village residential, this is across the board for all rural residential stuff, everything, all the rural residential areas in town, any home occupation, correct?
That's correct.
Just clarifying.
Does that mean that someone out in the rural area can put a sign out in front of their house, saying that their business, and they had their phone number, whatever, it doesn't do?
Yes, that's correct. There are already dozens of establishments like that.
New person would need a conditional use permit from the DRB to do that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not as a right situation. You have to go convince the Development Review Board that you're not going to create a nuisance in your neighborhood.
Right. It's pretty comprehensive, with square footage and restrictions on surrounding properties.
Chris, I have a question. Down in Cleveland Avenue, there are, I don't know, four or five houses down from me, that catering business. The zoning let them have the catering business in there. They had at one time, I believe, four trucks for going around. I'm not clear on what happened totally over the whole thing, but I understood it, they almost lost their business, because they got increasing the size of their business, they wound up, now I think they've only got one truck, or maybe two, because, I don't know, for some reason, they put, they shut them down, after they'd given permission to open.
They being the town of Shasbury zoning enforcement?
Mm-hmm, that was my understanding.
I don't know the history of that.
Well, okay.
So I can't really.
Well, I don't know it all myself, but, I mean, if they gave them permission to open up, and then they got, so they were doing well, you know, how do they have the authority to then go back and say? I mean, when they started the business, shouldn't they have had, you could have this many number of trucks, you can operate, you know, such, such, such hours? And not, you know, let them get going really well, and then basically almost shut them down?
Well, again, I don't know the facts of the particular case. I really can't comment on it. I mean, the attempt of this bylaw change is to say, you're allowed two employees, and you're allowed X square footage as a percentage of your residence, and plus 1,200 square foot in.
Is that all drawn out by the DRB when they start it?
It's all spelled out, but, you know, there are other impacts that you referred to, like traffic, parking, that, you know, are referred to, saying that all home occupations have to meet parking requirements in section da-da-da, and, you know, conditional use permits have conditions attached to them. I don't know what the particular conditions were in this case.
Well, I don't either, but I just, I would hate to see anybody, you know, get the permission to have the business, and then have the town, when they get going, go interfere with it.
Well, it's not intrinsic in the language of the bylaw. This has to do with how we enforce things.
Okay.
Ken, if I might make a comment there, that's, I think the philosophy of the law here is that by allowing home occupations, we allow people to get a business started.
.........................................................
Well, this was, they, what they had, they had catering trucks, and they wound up, they started with two, and then they had four, then they were back to one or two.
Yeah, if I could make my comment, the idea with the law is, yes, we'll allow people to have a home occupation. The idea is that it's small, and if a home occupation turns into a thriving business, it's probably time for that business to move into a commercial district and be a business there. That's the point of the, of these restrictions, is, yeah, you can do that. You can sell lemonade out of your, you know, out of your driveway, but then, you know, if you start bringing in, you know, diesel trucks full of lemonade and selling, starting a storefront and parking and all that, then it's time to move that into.
If you're permitted for one thing, then you've got something else, okay, that, I understand that thoroughly, but.
Okay, okay. So it would really come down to the particulars.
Yeah.
But it would certainly be within the town's purview to say, yes, this business has gotten too big. You've moved beyond the conditions that allowed it to be a home occupation. You can't do it anymore.
Well, they're still there, it's just, I'm not, you know, this was a few years ago, so I'm not, I'll just use that as an example.
Another thing is, too, that some, some businesses get, kind of get started really small, don't go before the DRB, just kind of build and build and build, and all of a sudden, now we got a problem, and we have to go talk to them, and they never even went before the DRB, type of thing, so that happens, too.
Oh, yeah.
Any more comments on this one?
All right, the third zoning bylaw involves multifamily housing. The ballot language reads, "Shall the voters approve a change to the zoning bylaws that allows only one or two family dwellings in rural residential districts, and allows single and multifamily dwellings in village residential districts?"
Chris, you want to explain this one to us?
The conundrum of the present zoning was pointed out to us by a housing developer, who said, "Well, you can only build multifamily housing out in the boondocks, you can't build it in the village." We said, "Whoa, wait, can this really be true?" And we went, read the language of the zoning resolution, and sure enough, it was true. And so we said, "No, wait a minute, this is all backwards, that you want to build your density in the highest density zoning, which is built residential, you've got sidewalks and schools and stores, commercial establishment, town offices, town water, this is the place to build dense, not out in the hinterlands." So we crafted simple language to see if we could reverse this. And the argument for not allowing multifamily housing in the rural districts is that I could, the only example I could think of, although there must be others that I'm not aware of, is on Route 7A, before you get to Polymeros Farm, there's that multifamily house on the east side of Route 7A, that, across from the hillside motel.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Which used to be the Terrace Restaurant, many decades ago. That's in roadside commercial zoning. I'm not aware of it out in rural residential zoning, but there might be examples of it that I don't know about. Anyway, so we think, you know, this has to do partly with affordability of housing in Shasbury, and the town plan in Chapter 2 talks about that there's a fair percentage of renters in Shasbury who are paying between 30 and 50 percent of their rent, of their income for rent, which is way above the affordability threshold, as, you know, conventionally understood. So the idea that you could have 10,000 square foot in the VR district here in the village, 10,000 square foot lot area per unit, so that you would need 30,000 square feet to build a three-unit, which would be the minimum size of multifamily, it seems like a reasonable equation. And as the price of land increases, this is reflected in rental costs and purchase costs of individual units. So we think it's a good fit, and we hope our logic is something that can convince others that this is a good move.
Any comments from the board?
It's quite common to have farm, old farmhouses in the multifamily, where either the farm worker or the next generation would be. So you have a lot of old farmhouses that do have the possibility of multifamily.
I'm aware of situations like that, Art, and the zoning bylaw actually has a provision for that situation, which is called accessory dwelling units, or something like that. And it was mandated by the state about five or six years ago, where they said that this would be a way to increase Vermont's housing stock without elaborate permit issues, that these are buildings that were presently being used, or temporarily used, or had been used for residential occupancy on farms especially, and that they could be brought back into the housing stock. So we have that in our zoning bylaws.
Good enough. Any comments from the public? Okay. The fourth zoning bylaw change involves subdivision regulations, and the ballot language reads, "Shall the voters approve changes to the zoning bylaws involving subdivision regulations, Appendix C? The changes increase incentives for developers to cluster development while preserving open spaces, and correct several minor inconsistencies."
Well, if you wanted to get into all the details of this, we could be here really late.
We don't want to do that.
Just to give you the broad brush of what the thinking behind it is, is that this is a provision for cluster zoning, it provides a present 15 percent bonus to people who use this situation. It provides kind of a wide latitude of ownership possibilities, which would be co-operations, condominium associations, townhouse situations, but it's never been utilized by anybody in this town. And so what the planning commission's logic was, was that the, it was very technical, and it involved lots of formulas, and we said, "Well, let's try and simplify those, so that it offers somebody the opportunity to design a situation specific to a piece of property." So that setbacks were for the entire piece, not for the individual lots, because there might not even be individual lots in some ownership situations. And that the issue was how the parcel related to the surrounding neighbors, the other landowners around them, and what assurances the town would have that this thing was run as a legal organization that conferred ownership, and then turned into a timeshare scheme or something like that. So anyway, it's long and complex, but those are the highlights of what's being proposed. And we've increased the density bonus from 15 percent to 20 percent, to see if we can get somebody to bite on this and make it more attractive.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Any comments, Mr. Commissioner Bill Pennbaker?
Yeah, one of the things that is left out of the proposal, given to the voters, is that a section of the main bylaws is struck out, that deals with open space subdivision. And that was the reason why this got turned down the first time, that that hadn't been covered properly.
There was a little bit of a conflict between regulations in two places, one in the zoning bylaws, the other in the subdivision regulations, both covering open space subdivisions. And so we thought it best to move everything to the subdivision regulations, and just strike it from the zoning bylaw with a note saying, "See Section 7.6 of subdivision regulations," and publish the two together, so that this would be easy for the public to navigate.
And you don't think, "Correct several minor inconsistencies" covers that?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know. But I do know that the reason it got turned down and passed back to the planning commission was because of that section in the main bylaws that hadn't been struck out.
And it, and at the time, it wasn't made clear that that was simply moved and struck out?
Well, at the time, we didn't, I don't think we even realized that there was a conflict in there, that the subdivision regulations were in two places. And so we decided to move it into just one place, and strike the other, and clean it up.
Okay, okay. That's good information. I'm not sure, I think I would argue that we keep this ballot language for the sake of simplicity.
It's fine, I just wanted to point out that there is this problem there.
Okay. Any other public comments? All right, well, that covers the bylaw changes that we are, that are being proposed. Again, they are brought to us from the planning commission. The select board has been aware of these for a while, has indicated their unofficial approval of them. I think I would go out on a limb and say, if it were up to the select board to approve these, we would approve them, but that's not how the process works in Shasbury. The voters approve all zoning bylaw changes, and so these will go on the ballot in March. And we, the select board, are hopeful that they will get approved, and we will continue to make information about these available on the website and in further public hearings as we get closer to. in further public hearings as we get closer to the ballot. If there are no other comments or questions, we will close the public hearing on zoning bylaw changes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right, we are now to Item 10, road foreman update. Terry, welcome.
How you doing?
Good, Terry.
Good. Where we start, Salt Shed or?
Uh, Salt Shed's Item Three. Give us your general opinion of the conditions of the roads right now, what you're working on.
We're grading every day that the weather provides us to grade. I think we're better than I was hoping for at this time with the roads. We've, we'll go back to the east side tomorrow. We'll do Maple Hill and Old Depot Road up that area, part of Cedar Mill probably, with both graders. But we're doing, we're continuing our grader training tomorrow morning also, so that slows us down a little bit. We've been hauling a lot of sand in, as you can see out there. We'll probably be doing some more of that also with the grader trainings going on tomorrow Otherwise, and that's pretty much all we've been doing is just the grading to get them ready for the winter.
Is there an agreement with Peckham-Daley's about Airport Road where their trucks pound it coming in and out of the pits?
They've ceased, I believe, I believe they're done out of that pit. They ran out of sand out of the pit. So we just put a good crown in it ourselves. Before this board, Karen and Margie and Brian Lent, Peter from Peckham, we went round and round about that part of the road. I just didn't want to put too much of our money into it. When they accepted the issue of what was going on, we've been going back and forth trying to get them to blacktop it. We offered to put fabric down if they'd blacktop it, and it just has gone back and forth for a while. And I haven't been able to get Brian Lent to say, "Yeah, we're done with that pit for quite a while now," or not, so. But we did put quite a bit of gravel in it the other day and put a big ground in the roadway through there. And I've had a couple compliments about how good it looked through there since we did it.
It was pretty rough a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to see if they were done there, because otherwise Brian was putting the material into the road for us.
Oh, he was, okay, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they've been, they've been providing all the material in that road, and they've been sometime grading it for us, sometimes they've been grading it for us.
Yeah, okay.
Because they tear it up so fast.
Yep.
Have they used Greens Pit anymore, or they have used that in a while, have they?
No, they haven't used that one in a while. Greens is the one up.
Cedar Mill.
No, absolutely nothing out of there.
Yep.
That I've, that I've seen. I mean, I can't say they don't go in a one day.
Oh, I haven't either, but I haven't been up there a lot.
And now I think they're done with the other one, because they ran out of sand.
The select board did receive some time ago a petition. It was about that. Number of people apparently signed on saying that they were unhappy with the condition of the road there. The petition was not signed, didn't give us any one to respond to.
There was no contact person.
There was no contact information on it. I've received a few comments myself lately about, in general, over time, the conditions of that bit of road. I started to wonder if we ought to reopen those negotiations with Peckham about paving it, but it sounds like you're saying it...
Well, if they're done through there, and if they're not going to keep... But the problem is, it's a wetland there. There's never been a base under it, and heavy trucks just keep pounding it down into the wetland. And if to do it right, we'd have to tear it out like we just did on Murphy Hill and put a good basin and then put the fabric over it and put the gravel down. But as long as they're going to keep running them heavy trucks over it, I don't even think that would stabilize it from going out. So that's why we've held off for our part doing it, and that's one reason Peckham's just kept maintaining it, fixing it. But if they're done in the pit, then we can relook at other options now. Before all you guys came, there was pine trees, this big side of the road. That was my first task when I started. We took all them big, huge pine trees down so the sunlight could get in there to try to dry it out a little bit better. We took about twenty huge pine trees that were right on the road out through there so the sunlight would get in there to try to dry it out a little bit better. It's helped, but it didn't create, fix the whole problem.
If Peckham is not planning to use that pit anymore, they won't be driving trucks as frequently over that part of the road.
Right.
Then we could think about getting in there and shoring up the base.
Yes.
And having a dirt road that we can maintain routinely as opposed to having a lot of problems like we've had.
We could grade that road when they're hauling, and literally within two weeks, we'd have to do it again. That's how fast they tear the road up there.
Sounds like that's a situation to monitor, see if, what Peckham's plans are really for that, and think about that some more as we learn more.
What pit is that? What do they call that one?
That one's, um...
Okay.
That one's Greens Pit. The other one is...
Greens Pit something, Cedar Mill. I don't know. I've never heard of naming that one.
I'm drawing a blank right now.
We all know where it is anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's that one.
I mean, just a little bit more information. I've offered to try to help them cut a roadway in just past the bridge, so they went right straight in off the bridge into their pit. Margie and I approached them, and the other board was willing to hear what I had to say about it, but I was willing to try to help cut the trees off the bank, pull some of the dirt out for them to make an opening runway to get them off of the corner and off that other stretch there. They didn't want to do that either. So, I mean, we've offered different scenarios to them to try to make it better for the people that live up there. At one time, the people that live on Oak Hill, not Oak Hill, the private road.
Fox Hill.
Fox Hill.
Fox Hill.
Couple of them approached me and said that Daly's gave them a signed letter saying if they purchased the land up in there, that they would pave that road, but nobody was ever able to provide me with the paperwork that they received, supposedly received, for Peckham to blacktop that road. So, I mean, we've gone around a lot of different ways on that section of road, and I've just tried to hold Peckham liable to fix the road there, because it's just a lot of our good money going after bad over and over and over.
Yeah, but they've been helping on that. I mean, they've been...
Well, they've helped. They've done their share, probably not as often as the people that live there would like, but they have put a lot of time and fill into that road.
Because with them kind of trucks over a wetland like that, I'm not sure you could ever make, no matter how much you dug it down.
You're probably right, but I think it would help to have a good stone basin there before we put fabric.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be the only ledge. That'd be the only thing that'd ever fix it.
Yeah, I think we all agree Peckham's been a good corporate neighbor in this town, and they offer to help us out with roads regularly, and that's not something they have to do. I mean, it's the, it's, in most places, it's the town's job to keep the roads up so the businesses will come, and they've been...
They've been very good to us.
They've been very good about helping out.
It's always a road trip.
Yes, the report on the tractor.
Well, with about an hour and a half of work, we had it running. Put two batteries in it. We had it running. It goes forward and reverse, no problem. But like Dave said, it's not warmed up yet. We don't know the condition of the transmission after it's warmed up. But the preliminary, preliminary, forward and back, went right into gear, no problem, forward, back. It does have a transmission leak. It's missing a valve about inch and a half by inch and a half, just missing right off it. That is one of your Class III leaks, because it's just not on there. We do have one on this other machine, or I couldn't get a price of one, because they said our VIN number didn't come up in the system, and I couldn't exactly tell them what valve it was on the transmission body, valve body, so they couldn't give me an exact price of it. So I ballparked that one. I went, I hopefully high, I'd say a thousand dollars. It can't be this big, so I think I'm extremely high, but I'm just protecting ourselves with a quote to you guys. Another Class III leak was they had all the hydraulic lines unhooked for the quick coupler where the bucket hooks in. So when Dave hit the lever to operate the boom, it squirted the hydraulic oil out. So we took the lines, we tied them together, no more leak. It didn't fix the quick, didn't fix the quick coupler, but we had no more leak on it. So then the boom went up and down, no problem, moved it forward and back. Like I said, it started right up like a champ, runs. It did everything we wanted it to do, and there is a bucket sitting right behind it, and the master sergeant there said that bucket goes with that machine. And today, we did win the machine if we want it. It just, they finalized it today, and South Dakota applied for it, but they gave it to us if we want it. So with that said, to try to do, it has one tire that'll hold there for about a week. The master sergeant said, "I don't know if we can fix the tire, because we didn't have no air in it when we were there. I don't know if we can just put a tube in it or not, but we're looking at..." Steve recommended that we do a complete service on the machine when we get back here, because it's sat for five years. So if we do all the fluids, all the filters and everything, we're looking at six, seven hundred dollars. I put down a thousand to be safe on that. Fix the transmission, like I said, I put a thousand on that, because we don't know. It's literally an inch and a half hole that the valve's missing out of with two little teeny screws that holds it in there. It could be a seven hundred dollar part, it could be a forty dollar part. We don't know until we get it back here. Obviously, didn't have much importance, because it went in gear and moved, but it was just leaking transmission fluid out of it. The transition fee, or the transaction fee, I guess you'd call it, is five hundred dollars to purchase the piece of equipment. And if, if the worst-case scenario, the tire doesn't hold there, you're looking at anywhere from a thousand dollars to two thousand dollars for one tire. And I could not get any trucking cost to get it here yet. I haven't been able to. From local people, Norm and some other people said, "Our best bet might be just to hire Jerome locally or Weaver locally, just to go down and get it for us and send one of our guys with him, and we might get the best rate we would get to do it." Anyway, but I, Craig's on a hunting trip, and Jamie never returned my calls since last week.
Want the rims and tires off of that machine, fit that out?
Steve didn't know if they would. If they did, we have to put all four, because it's a bigger machine. If they will, then we could, we have to take all four of these off, because that's a thirty-two-five.
Is it physically bigger, Terry, or is it just a different number?
No, it's physically bigger. It's a four-yard bucket, came with a four-yard bucket.
You've got a four-yard bucket out there?
That, we had to cut that one down. That's only supposed to have a three yard on it. It's a twenty-three-five by twenty-five tire. I called Mark today to see if he could find me a used tire somewhere, and he said he didn't have any luck with a one-day notice. He said with a little more time, he probably could find a used tire.
Might find one down at the Huzick Tire. They have used tires.
We could. I'm sure I can find a used tire.
Yeah.
I don't think that will be the end of the world. But you're looking at, the worst-case scenario, all the way around, you're looking at about five thousand dollars.
And how many hours?
Thirty, one hundred and, it was thirty-one-hundred and something. It's like nil on it. The thing looks like it's still new.
I wanted that number too. I was really wondering, hours from our crew to do the work, or would it be our crew doing the work on it?
Steve said he thought, very realistically, one day he could have this thing up and running, no problem. But he said, "Give me two days if you want to be safe." But he said one day he could change all the fluids, put all new hydraulic oil in it, fix the leak in the side of the transmission, clean it out, whatever he has to do. He said there's really nothing... We had to take a bird's nest out of the muffler to get it started, but that was the only thing they had to do.
Don't say that out there, EPA.
Fish and game department, to be honest.
Yeah.
I think the way they had it worded, what you guys read here, and it scared you people also, I think it did us a big favor as to why we could acquire this machine now. If it read perfectly running machine, Indian Affairs or the federal government will scoop this up in nope time. Like Art said, he just paid seventy thousand dollars for a used one. You probably had more hours on yours when you got?
No, it was three thousand.
Was it three thousand?
Yep. The size smaller though.
Yep. And I believe you all agreed last time, you probably could get almost all that scrapped if something did need to happen. But Steve assured me again, if something does go wrong with this transmission, that one will fit.
That one is?
The one out back.
The old forklift that's up there.
The old forklift machine. Transmissions are identical, he said. We could take the part off that machine out there more than likely to fit this one than what I'm talking about for a thousand dollars. But Dave, like Dave said earlier, if it's only the one part, do we just want to sell that one whole instead of taking the one part off it and...
You started that with the batteries from that one, right?
Yes.
Comments?
Was my motion tabled or?
Your motion was postponed.
Postponed, right.
Pending a report on the, on that, and I can't actually remember what it was we postponed. I have to pull up the minutes.
What's the difference between postpone and table? Is there a difference?
Did the lights work on that, Terry?
Tabled requires a vote.
It drives.
Okay.
It means it goes away until...
Now, that's probably what, twenty-four volt system?
It only just means we can bring it up when we're ready.
I would think so if it's a government issue.
Yeah.
It's been resurrected.
It's been resurrected.
So that means you either got to find twenty-four volt lights or get a converter.
You can get twenty-four volt, it's not a problem.
Yeah.
They're all on it, and they're broke, if that's what you mean, but...
Well, no, I mean, because, just because they're there, that don't mean they're...
Right, and all the glasses in it.
Yeah.
Broken glass in it.
Yeah.
Purchase the motion.
So the motion was to purchase the military surplus bucket loader, five hundred dollars plus five hundred transportation fees.
Plus a thousand.
What did I say?
Five hundred.
Thousand in transportation fees.
Did you check with Steve? He might be able to go get that.
Steve?
Maybe.
He doesn't have a low boy?
No, he'll boy, but that a twenty-ton trailer.
I didn't ask him, no. I thought you'd have to a bigger truck, trailer to go down.
I don't think so. I mean, as long as he's not overweight, he's going to take along.
It'll be over height, Kenny.
Be over height?
Yes. My, I've got a little five forty.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, it would be.
It's just thirteen.
Yeah, the interstate and stuff, yeah.
Do you wish to bring this up again now?
I do.
Art has, again, brought up the motion that was postponed to make a, to purchase the bucket loader for five hundred dollars plus a thousand dollars in transportation fees. I'll second. Discussion.
Would it be possible, because Terry and I have been discussing the transportation fees, to amend that? It might be a thousand. Were we talking around maybe thirteen hundred to bring it up here?
Well, Dave said that as far as he knew, Craig got a hundred dollars an hour. We did, we did it in the pickup in ten hours. I mean, five hours down, five hours back, but that doesn't mean they, they could do that with it.
No, you won't do that with a truck, oh boy.
Okay, so, so twelve or fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
Fifteen.
I think fifteen hundred will cover, right?
Yeah, can I, can I make that, to amend that to be fifteen hundred dollars transportation fees?
We have a motion to amend, the main motion to make the transportation fees fifteen hundred dollars instead of a thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment to change the transportation fees from one thousand to fifteen hundred, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Do we have five thousand dollars to make this thing work?
We could probably find five thousand to make it work. Would have to come out of different parts here.
We have three thousand in just the general budget. We have three thousand in just the general budget of, uh, anything we need to buy during the year.
Yeah, and there's other things in equipment maintenance where we can bring up these parts, uh, and we will be making some money back when we dispose of the other one, which would be fairly quickly. As soon as we get this running, we should get rid of this. And that's gonna, anything we spend on this will be made up by getting rid of the other one. Because the other one's here and I've, from what you gentlemen are telling me, I don't know the scrap market, but we could take this out and get five grand for it. You know, just turn it over to Brian House.
Steve made a, uh, comment that we might wanna check like the salvage areas that buy these axles and
Yeah.
and things like that because he said them axles are worth big money in that thing.
Yeah. And, and just, uh, when, when Terry was talking prices too, uh, uh, one of the reasons we have the thousand dollar valve is just make it big. Don't under, just give us a good, a good price for it. So five thousand is almost definitely on the high end. Because I asked him to make it a high.
I believe the filters and oil is only 600, but I put a thousand down just to.
But if we, if we, this gets up and running, then that one's gonna go. Uh, even if we have to, uh, uh, take it from one account, a lot of the maintenance will be taking place in the spring. We'll have that, this one gone and the money will be back. So, uh, it's kind of just a trade off.
And this machine would, uh, end up doing what we're doing with an ex, uh, a one yard excavator now in terms of loading trucks?
Yard back home.
Pardon?
One yard back home.
One yard back home.
Well, it, it'd make it a lot, uh, it's gonna make it much quicker in the yard here so that the smaller one can load the, the salt trucks uh, over here in this shed and the big one will stay out there and load the big trucks with the sand. Instead of running back and forth. I, like I, I think I explained before, I never would have believed the trucks would arrive here at the same time and have to wait to get loaded. But if you think about it, they have all the same sized route. The sanders spread at the same speed that the other one does. They go out to spread sand and they all bribe back here at the same time. So now with this new loader, two buckets will fill a truck. And they'll be out of here. Or you're putting seven, eight with the small one on there.
How long does that take to fill a truck?
We, the last truck has waited up to 40 minutes before. So we're trying to cut down overhead and speed up the process a little bit. Must be a lot faster putting the pile up also.
Any more discussion? All in favor of, uh, purchasing the military surplus bucket loader for $500 plus fifteen dollar, fifteen hundred dollars in transportation fees? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Before you get to the next subject, I think the blacksmith shop across the street used to be the first town garage. It parked the only truck in it for years. The door swung open onto the sidewalk.
Okay.
You could be right.
I'm pretty sure I am right.
No, the, the town garage is right between here and the shed.
Yeah, but the very first one, they backed the truck right off the street into the garage right over there.
Well, that might have been when they had the equivalent to a today's one ton.
Yeah, it was a small.
Yeah.
It was the only truck they had then.
Yeah, three yard truck was a big truck.
Yeah.
Load of my hand with a head jump.
But you all are asking questions about the property you were there before.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, yes.
I had never heard that Terry, but somehow the town got involved in it.
Did you have more to tell us before we talk about the salt shed? Yes, Lexi.
I noticed that, um, Cold Spring Road got graded again really recently, where it looks like it got more material on it.
Cold Spring and Horton Hill?
Yeah. And I was just wondering, um, is that gonna happen on Rollin Road?
You're saying you'd like to see Rollin Road graded?
They, they didn't get.
I mean, eh, it, um.
I know they did Madison, they did Cold Spring, they did Horton Hill, they did Peters Flats, they did Myers Road, they did Tinkham, they didn't do Rollin Road?
Not?
Okay.
Not a few months, yeah.
I just wonder because.
Yep, we'll get it done then. It was a lack of communication to us, I guess. That could have been when we were doing the grader training over there the other day.
It's really bad. And then like where built this close, you know, where you, you pull in there, there's like, you know how you did driveways with the blacktop? So there's a little bit of blacktop in people's driveways. You know, like in North Bennington, how it goes. Well, there's like a big pothole.
Right off the end of the blacktop?
And the blacktop is like right next to it, there's just giant pothole right there.
Always happens right at the end of the blacktop. Always does it. The water runs off the blacktop, it makes it soft there. So when the car goes off it, it pounds it right there and it blows it out.
Yeah, well, it gets pretty deep. Um, it, it seemed like did Rollin Road just deteriorated overnight as to, as to, uh, you know, Cold Spring. But Rollin Road, I was kind of looking around and it didn't happen.
We skipped it because you lived on it.
Shows you how I rank too.
I can't favor the chairman's road and do all the work to his road. Look like we're favoring him.
That's right. Has to make sure the chairman's road is done last so it doesn't.
Sure.
That's why.
Nobody can blame you for favoring the slight work, can they? No, they can't.
Wrong road, Lexi. I have somebody down there, uh, not tomorrow, the day after Wednesday. They'll do it.
All right, we were gonna talk about the, uh, the salt shed and the, um, the, the hearing that the DRB held the other, uh, last Wednesday uh, about that proposal. Uh, the proposal is that, uh, we extend the salt shed that sits out here, uh, by sixteen feet in order to, uh, double its capacity and, um, hold more salt. The, the idea is there is that, uh, last year we ran into a temporary salt shortage and we started to worry a lot that we'd get a big storm and not have enough salt to cover it, uh, to, to do our job in protecting, uh, the roads and keeping them safe and passable. Um, we've been warned by some of the salt suppliers that we ought to uh, be worried about that again this year. Uh, this is a proposal that, uh, Terry made to us to, to increase our capacity. It, um, it doesn't increase the total amount of salt that we would use necessarily in a year, but it would have us, allow us to have more on hand so that if there was a temporary shortage, it's more likely that we could get through it if we have 120 tons, uh, in standby than if we have 60 tons in standby. One of the things that, uh, philosophically this board has indicated is that we believe we should follow our own rules. Uh, and then that prompted us to go to the DRB and request approval for this. Uh, the DRB, uh, was, uh, I think a little surprised by our, our proposal because it's generally thought that, um, the town can do whatever it wants. And so they went to and sought legal opinion and, uh, essentially that was the legal opinion that was returned. Uh, I, I overstate and simplify, but it is the case that the select board is the, the final authority in the town. The DRB is appointed by the select board. They, uh, they cannot prevent us from doing something. Uh, what they can do is, uh, set conditions on any, uh, proposal that we make, anything that we wanna do. Uh, uh, but the law also says they cannot impose conditions that keeps us from, um, from, uh, applying the use that we wanna apply with, uh, that development or that project. So, uh, essentially they can, they can make suggestions that we, uh, we abide by, but if we decide that if we follow those suggestions, we won't be able to do what we need to do, um, they can't stop us from doing that. Um, I was at the DRB hearing. I indicated to the chairman that it was this board's philosophy that we should abide by our own, our own rules and we would be curious to know if they would uh, approve this for anybody other than the select board. Um, the chair declined to go down that hypothetical road. So, uh, it's up to us to uh, interpret the, uh, the, uh, I suppose what, what the DRB might do in that situation. But I think, uh, it's pretty clear, I think to all of us, that nobody else other than the town would be allowed to expand that salt shed. It's, um, in, it's, uh, too close to the property line. Uh, what we're proposing to do is add on to a structure that
Non-conforming to begin with.
Is non-conforming to begin with. Uh, it's, it probably is not, uh, wouldn't be allowed to attach, you know, something to, uh, something that looks like that one, that one does. Now, I can tell you at the hearing that the, uh, the landowners on the other side of the property were at the hearing. Uh, they were not happy about the idea of us expanding the salt shed uh, for the eyesore reasons and also for just the increased capacity of salt that's there. Um, they claim that the, the salt has killed trees and killed grass in their yard. Uh, I don't know if salt has done that, but you can go out there yourself and see that on the other side of the salt shed, there are dead trees and dead grass. Uh, so it's, it's entirely possible that that's the case. My personal opinion is that, uh, we should withdraw this request from the DRB. Uh, I, I understand that the, the foreman's, uh, reason for coming with that request. Uh, he was trying to think ahead and plan for the, the eventuality. I think it's a real question, you know, that you have to, to ask yourself is what is the likelihood that we'll find ourselves in a situation uh, where we can't cover the roads with the salt that we need to? I just believe that we ought to find another way to protect ourselves. Uh, find some other place to put salt or, uh, find some other way to, uh, to, to protect the roads in that situation. But, uh, I personally am not in favor of, uh, forcing the issue of, of, uh, putting a non-conforming structure, uh, expanding a non-conforming structure there, uh, to the detriment of the neighbors. And I welcome other comments.
Well, you know, this salt shed has sufficed for 40 years or so, right? When was it built? When you were on the?
That was long before I was working for the town. That was built in the sixties.
Up until last winter.
Built it before this garage out here.
Up until last winter, we had a fair, I wouldn't even call it a real tough winter. It was an average winter 25 years ago. Which we haven't had very many in the last 15, 20 years. It might be just an anomaly. I know you see the, uh, the Farmer's Almanac reports, it's gonna be bad or, you know, I just, it's gonna be what it is gonna be.
But that wasn't the reasoning behind it. Reasoning is because the cold weather went further south. And now they're taking our salt out of the mines here going south, which leaves, say they can cover 75 towns that call in a day and there's 150 a day that call in. So if you get to the third or fourth day on that list to call in, you could wait three weeks for a load. Where up until last year, we always had another replenishment of salt in 24 hour period turnaround time. So if I knew we're getting a big storm tomorrow, I called today to get a load of salt by tomorrow afternoon back here to keep our shed filled. But now I'm trying to bridge our way in case we have to go the three week period, which they already warned us that more than likely this is going to happen again this year to bridge ourselves for a three week span to get one load of salt. Now, I understand it's not in compliance, but what I was asking you is do we think of the whole town and do it temporary because nobody here wants that salt shed there or wants that size of a salt shed? We're all working to try to get a bigger one. We're trying to find a place to put a bigger one more adequate. But for right now, we got to weigh the odds. Do we add on to a non-compliant salt shed to provide salt to the people if this happens again? Or do we follow the rules and say, sorry, we can't get the salt. You gotta drive on the road conditions you've got? And that's all I laid out in front of you people. You guys have the full right to make that decision. I'm just letting you know, they warned us that it could be another tough winter for salt because south is buying a bunch of it.
And I, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's all speculation at this point, as far as I'm concerned.
But last year wasn't.
But the ten, fifteen years before that was. Keep people safe.
We had once one winter where we didn't even have any six inches of snow at one time. That was it.
I.
And last year was not.
Never ever had this problem before last year.
And, uh, I just, I, I'm kind of in, uh, Tim's camp on this one. Um, the wouldn't allow it any other place. We can do it because we're the town, uh, the neighbors. Uh, I wasn't at the meeting, but if Tim says they, they didn't like it, they didn't like it. Um, and I just don't think it's, it's not a matter of, I got a, I, I got a feeling you'd be able to get salt in a, in a, if you paid more, if that's what it comes down to. Um, and if we're gonna build in another year or two, time and energy to put that up for a temporary and then tear it all down, uh, I don't see it's worth it pers- personally.
What do you figure the cost?
Go on, Ken, let me interrupt. Uh, we're really discussing a motion, so I'm gonna make a motion that we withdraw the request to, to expand the salt shed from the DRB and I'm expecting Mitch to second it.
I'll second it.
Now we can have a discussion.
I look at it, Tim, as a safety issue. It's only gonna be temporary anyway. If you, if you look at something, these long weekends in the winter, and he doesn't have the salt, and somebody gets killed, I don't, I don't want that in my content.
Yeah, but we're all saying that salt's the only thing you can do. I mean, you, you only use the salt on the blacktop. And there's no reason why you can't put sand down there. Can't plow and sand it.
Hmm, I guess, good, yeah.
I, it's not like you're gonna shut down the roads or.
Well, it's just not as good, Eric.
I mean, I, I realize that, Ken, but we're kinda getting a little bit, I just think we're getting a little bit carried away with it to, you know.
Well, it's, I mean, that's up to the board, but it's just, that's my opinion and, and.
Just one other thing I'd like to mention though, so you guys all realize it. We can't mix sand then if we don't have the salt either though. It'll freeze right up if we don't. What we've got here on hand.
That's treated.
That's treated. And we use dailies as much as we can during the daylight hours. But we'll rebuild this pile three times this winter to this size. Uh, we, we'll go through that much.
And that is a salt and sand mixture.
That's, we mix that, so it doesn't freeze up on us.
To the mix on the roads, we would still be getting some salt on the road.
Right.
And just, uh, for Mitch's point there about if we had spent more on it, most like ourselves, most of these towns have contracts, so it's not like it'll be readily available if we say we'll pay $90 a ton. We have a 600 ton contract in every town and every government does. So they can't just start breaking the contracts.
I have 2,000 ton available, that's getting it. I have three different companies that we signed a, a deal with that we don't have to take. But I can go through Morton, Art Cargo or American. But what they're telling us is they don't know they'll be available.
But if we ask, they can't, they can't bump contracted people because someone else is asking them, offering some more money. Otherwise contracts would be worthless from the beginning.
The other thing is too, Art, that, yeah, you can sand the roads, but you take like that white cricket road. If you can't salt that and he has to sand it, he could sand that three, four times before because the lid will blow off, melt down in, glaze over. It, it's, you know. Because I've been in that situation. I've been there.
There are, there are also other things we can do too. I mean, you can put chloride on the roads before, before it starts storming. State does that.
Chloride don't wanna work. No, they're using the, I believe they're using the magnesium chloride on the roads.
It's not calcium chloride.
No.
Okay.
Magnesium.
But it is liquid.
It is liquid.
You've got a truck that could put it on if we could get it.
Yeah.
Um, there are also additives to the salt to make it more effective. You use less of it, all that sort of stuff, which, uh, I think environmentally we ought to look at.
Oh, I agree. I think we need more space before we do that.
The be, the sugars, the sugar combination.
Or the ice be gone, any of it, but we just need a bigger space with a
And a hopper, we need.
A regular salt shed where we can contain it. I don't think we better re-spray any liquids into that one.
Uh, I'm wondering if, if make an agreement with Town of Bennington or something like that, if they treat their salt, if we could treat it there and bring it back here or if they, uh.
I called, uh, well, I talked to Dicky Morgan, RJ. I couldn't get ahold of RJ. Uh, they have about a thousand tons of salt on hand and they use about 2,600. Wait a minute, 100,000 ton. Thousand ton. Whatever, they've only got a third of the salt in, on hand, what they. Whatever, they've only got a third of the salt in, on hand, what they use a winter. So if you, I thought you were going down the road that maybe we could put some into their shed. They, they have no more room either. I've tried them, Norm obviously can't, tried Peckham's, I've tried Manikins. I've tried anywhere that we could put a large volume of salt just to have it. Because it'd be nice if we could get all that we already bought and have it on hand somewhere.
Yeah. Lexi has it.
What about out there at the, at the transfer station by the, the water department building? There's a concrete pad sitting there. Is there some way we could use dead men or props up some sides there to-
The roof is the, the big thing.
Or tarp it? Just an emergency salt pile that would, would, you know, give us some salt, you know, in the event that we ran out, even if it was just enough to keep the pile working?
Um, yeah, but you'd have to, we'd have to cover the whole cement because you couldn't have any of the water running into the salt because it will ruin it. It just, you can't have the clumps of salt and the water just clumps it. So you understand what I mean? If the cement pad has just a little bit, even if it's completely level and the water hits the cement over here and runs through, we'd have to cover all the cement. So no water was on that cement to run into the salt area. But i- if the second loader works out, we could have a salt pile anywhere.
You're not going to tell me there's no water getting on the salt over here because there are giant holes that I can see through that salt shed over there where the beams-
Yeah, but it's puddling water, they'll clump the salt together. Obviously, water gets in it when it's in the truck, but it, there's not enough of it that makes a big, huge, hard clump. If there is, we got to smash it with the buckets and it won't go through the spinners. You have a very minimal door when you open it up to let the salt out through the chain.
Well, it's not in the truck that long either.
Right, it's not in the truck that long either. We always empty them as soon as we get back. We try to mix it up. That's the one problem with a big, open door on the front here. You can't have it right to the front of the, because the rain will be blowed in then and it's the puddling water that clumps the salt really, really hard.
And regarding the, that pad down there, I've made an inquiry to the state. I haven't heard back from them yet, but there is a wellhead, it's nonpotable water. I don't know if the law allows any difference because you can't do it in a, in a well shield. So I don't know if there's a difference between potable and nonpotable water, but there is a well right next to that pad. So that might be a moot point, anyway. Another option is some temporary structure out here on the property. I don't know if that's acceptable with our lease of that property. But I talked to Terry briefly about if we can put up the poles and the siding here, can we put up the poles and the siding out there? The plant is open for another two weeks, I understand. They decided to stay open a little longer. So we could build a pads, block it, put the poles up around that and just dump 50 tons in there. It's the same structure except it'd be out there. But we have this verbal lease on the property, so I don't, I don't know where that would go unless we got a written permission and it could just be a complicated cumbersome process.
Well, wouldn't you, Dave, would, if you went out there and moved it, that, aren't you got to get a permit from the state then? Because you're moving it.
That's the other inquiry, too, is on temporary shed, what kind of permission you need.
Lexi Covell, you've been asking to speak.
How much space are you talking about for the extra?
16 feet by 14.
16 feet by 14? Well, I just, I just have a suggestion, you know? What about a storage container? One of those steel storage containers?
How would you get it out?
Yeah, the problem is reaching into it with the-
Yeah, I just didn't know what the access to us to it, you know, but-
The big problem is you have to have the, the truck back in, tilt up, dump it in, and then Terry has to get in with the bucket loader and you have to get deep in to pull it out. So you need something with angled roof and pretty high, what, we're talking 22 feet or something with a roof angle.
If, if you look at North Bennington's, that's a, that's the way the new salt sheds are designed. This is really inadequate right here all the way around, but it has been used for years and it's been sufficient all along. Just, I was just trying to look ahead. They're, they're telling us to get all the salt up front that you can and stockpile it, so that's what I was trying to do.
Why, I just wonder if we can stockpile it, you know?
It's not sure how we'd get it out.
Yeah, yeah, we can get it in a lot of places, it's how we get it out.
Yeah.
And we've looked at a lot of options, anything around, anyplace where we could put, because it isn't a big space, but someplace accessible where we could store this for one season or maybe two and, and pull it out. But we're not having any luck finding any-
Actually, I heard Daleys is building a new building to put salt in because they're in such a bind right now. They tore down their whole cold patch pile up there and they're taking excess panels from precast to put a building up in a hurry.
Oh, really?
To put salt into it because they're, they're in trouble right now for it.
See if we can get some space with them. And that's actually brings up another issue of the, that comes in here, too, that I wasn't aware of until the DRB hearing, that for a time, just like you get sand during the daytime hours from Daleys, back in the day, they would get salt from Daleys. Daleys used to have a salt shed. It was taken out in 2006 or '07. So this was a spare capacity for weekends and vacation periods. The main salt, from what I gathered, was coming straight from Daleys.
Daleys used to have the contractor distribute all the salt to the towns around here.
Yeah, and that, that went out about 2006 or '07, so it's just been these last seven years.
But after that, we still, Town of Shastbury had the right to use the cement building up there. So we stockpiled most of our salt in there until the last two years.
Okay, well, there's another one.
Because they started putting their own sand for the precast in there, so.
When do you think he's going to have this building up?
Well, I don't think it's that big. It's-
Only has to be 16 feet longer.
Sell him the poles.
Maybe we can make an inquiry that way because we, we have looked like anywhere to find any garage we could just dump a load in and pick up.
You got any room down at your place?
No.
No.
What, what do you know about where we used to store the, the, um, track excavator or the, the old bulldozer at the landfill?
Two bays of that is leased agreement or something to do with a landfill to tame. We have one and we have all our other stored stuff in there, lawnmowers, generators.
Is there, is there part of it under dirt, dirt floor where the-
They're all three are dirt floor.
All three are dirt floors? Okay, then.
The doors aren't big enough to get-
It's also, we're back to the well shield from the neighboring property. It's, I'd have to get the exact dimensions, but if there's a well with that property next door, we'd be within the well shield.
Sure, okay, then.
We need equipment at both spots, spots, too.
Well, but with this new thing, that could stay here for the sand.
Yeah, we'd be all right with that, with the, with the new loader. Right now, you couldn't because we only have one way to load.
But with the well shield there, that's, because we've been thinking of places over there we could build this, too, because it wouldn't take much, but-
I mean, it would be ideal on this site because of mixing the sand. It, it would be the, even if we did it out on the rented property, if we could do that to mix the sand.
Yeah, because we're talking about the overflow bin, you know, another 16 by 14 with a high roof. As, as long as we can still get mechanic, but of course, the problem is that I'm afraid of, and that's why I started making the inquiries, is running into an issue with A and R and building a salt shed. And how many permits are we going to need to even do that?
Yeah, how quick could you get them?
Uh, probably not that quickly if we need them. So it might, this also might be not something we could do this winter. I didn't, I haven't heard back from Rick, but as soon as I hear back from him, I'll know.
Rick, from the state?
Yeah.
Any other comments? John?
My name is John Staples. I was just curious as to other municipalities and how they face a dilemma like this. Isn't it possible to store salt on the open ground with a tarp on it? Isn't that a simple solution?
I think at the minimum, it has to be on an impervious cover. That's what, is the information that we're operating under now, yes.
Which is a, just asphalt ground. You need some kind of sidewalls on it to keep it. Ideally, you wouldn't be in the, in the, you could tarp it, I suppose, and only use it to replenish this one. Because you wouldn't want to be out there trying to mix in the snow or the sleet or the rain because it would clump up fairly quickly.
I would suppose if you put it on a slight hill where you had the sides like you're saying with the tarp over it, where all ran, water ran away from it, that would theoretically work. You just couldn't obviously have it any type of hole.
Yeah, yeah.
But wouldn't frozen ground be considered impervious?
Wouldn't be frozen.
It won't be frozen with the salt on it.
Yeah, because the salt wouldn't let it freeze.
No.
Yeah, when it melted, those clumps of salt would, would be in the ground.
But you're going to have to, you're going to have to surface underneath the shop, check it out.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm not sure, but I believe it is adamant that you have to have blacktop under it, right?
Yeah, or something. You can have anything under it, but it has to be something.
I think it eats concrete, though, but I think you have to have something under it, yes.
Well, the other thing is if you get a big pile out there, even if you got a tarp on it, you get two foot of snow on it, then you, how you get the salt?
It's going to be quite a task getting the snow off the tarp to get to the salt.
Yeah.
To answer John's question, you ought to, down the, down the Port of Albany, that's all it is, is a huge pile.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's just-
There's piles?
Yeah.
Well, there's a pile right on the river down there in Albany.
Yeah, that's where they dump it all in.
I always wondered how they did that with that river right there.
That pile's what, I don't know, but that-
I'm sure. I'm thinking it's crap, but it's got to be because it's got to be environmentally-
Yeah.
We ran all this.
All right, we, the motion before us is to withdraw our application to the DRB to expand the salt shed out back. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Ken abstain? Vote is 4-1-0. The motion carries. We will withdraw our application from the DRB to expand the salt shed. I think we had a lot of ideas here. I, I think we ought to keep thinking and try to, you know, come up with some way to store some emergency salt or extend the salt we have or come up with plans for what happens if we, if we do run out of salt. But like Mitch was saying, we've operated this way for a long time. We may not run out. We could expand the salt shed and fill it up and run out anyway, so it's a, it's a guessing game.
Well, I, I think it's also an indication that we're rapidly running out of options with the town garage and, and storage, that, you know, that we've-
I think the salt shed is the biggest thing we need to change in these.
Yeah. One more reason for us to reconsider.
Tony, I think you make a very good point, that we're starting to feel the effects of having failed to address the situation in the garage and now we're, we're having to do all sorts of unpleasant things to try and keep, keep the town running.
If it passed last spring, we'd probably be, wouldn't be talking about it.
Terry, unless you have something else to tell us, I'll let you go to bed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
When last we were in the town administrator report, did we get all the way through everything you had for us?
Pretty much. We are changing one thing for the website. Listening to, to different discussions of the purchasing policy. Our, our web administrator has been on vacation or it would have started already. I'm going to have a section of the website started where we will post all bids and proposals for anything we're going to contract on there. I think we'll post them for a 21-day period with who to contact, what's required, so that everyone has an equal opportunity to see it. The way the wording is and the way we've been following it, three contractors have to be spoken with or notified. And this will broaden it up to everyone. It'll just be on there and whoever reads it and decides they want to apply for one will be able to do that. Try to listen to some of the people who came in and spoke after the last meeting and, and I can see, you know, just to expand a little bit, the, the wording in it is a little vague, maybe, you know, that we can contact three people under 10,000. So this way, everyone, all the local contractors, everyone will be able to see it on our website and you can put in a bid or proposal. We've, I'll have a couple going up as soon as we work out the, the way to do this, where lights in the garage and, well, now it'll be the spring because we're not going to get to Howard Park now, but for electrical work in Howard Park. I think it'll just be a, a fairer way of getting everything out.
So would you just put something in the paper to say, go to the website, we're looking for bids on electrical for Howard Park?
No, because if we start, if we start going to the paper, it's going to cost us $500 for every job and, and that's not practical. I think by word of mouth and word of TV here and, and just people talking and if you access our website, which we're trying to redesign a little bit, when you come to the, opening it up, it'll have current bids or proposals being accepted by the town. We'll do a timeframe of like 21 days from posting and in 21 days, any active contractor in the area should have an opportunity to look at it and see what's-
So whether it would be like electrical?
Whatever we need. No, it'll just be-
Nails? I mean, you'd have different, different bids for different, I mean, you wouldn't just-
Yeah, like we were looking for, the first one will undoubtedly be lighting for the town garage, which is, is very difficult to work in at this time of year because it gets very dark. And that would definitely fall well below the 10,000, if not below the $3,000 level, but let's put it out there and give, give each contractor an opportunity to make a proposal if they choose. After 21 days, we can choose just the way we do now.
Can we put conditions on there, like LED lights?
No, oh, no, it'll be what we want. It'll be, in the garage case, it will be pretty much, point of contact will be Terry, Stacy to get over the specifications. I mean, we're not going to write, we want this X bulb with this wiring. I mean, that's why you hire an electrician.
But, I mean, you got to give the electrician the same specifications. I mean, all the electricians have the same specs. 10 lights, LED preferred, stuff like that.
Well, yeah, basics like, you have, you have 12 light fixtures, LED, and, you know, I don't-
The wiring associated with such.
Then you, then we might as well hire an engineer for every job because I'm not an electrician, I'm not a plumber, I'm not a this, that, or the other.
Oh, you got to get the basics. I'm not either. But I, when I ask three, when you ask three contractors to come and give you an estimate, you want them to be looking at the same exact thing. And that's what I'm asking, is that's going to be on the site? What you're expecting? Oh, I'll replace the garage lights for 1,500 bucks or, you know, and so, no, it gets a little difference. You got to have more specification, you got to have specifications to get equal apples and apples.
That, that happens as a course of business now. What David's proposing is not any different than when we call up three electricians and ask us to give, ask them to give us proposals for doing a certain amount of work. We're just saying that now, in addition, or maybe instead of calling three electricians and asking for a bid on this amount of work, we'll also have a place on the website where others that we didn't necessarily call to satisfy the requirements of the purchasing policy can put in bids just because they see it on the website.
But are you going to call people or are we going to have them go to the web? We're not going to do both, right?
Yeah, that's, that's my question. What happens if you don't get, say it's over $10,000 and you don't get three people?
No, it doesn't include over 10,000. We'll put that on the web, but 10,000 is specific bidding process.
Okay.
That the bids would have to be opened here. What I'm talking about is this, this between three and 999.
Okay, which requires three.
Three, that I can go out and solicit three people.
So what happens if you don't get three responses from the website? Are you then going to go out, so you're going to have, and then?
21 days is up. 21 days is up, I would think whoever bids is, is in here.
Okay, that's, I just-
But yeah, and this is the part that we'll, we'll straighten out.
Because right now, we say we have to have three, but if you're saying we'll put down the website for 21 days and take-
Yeah, well, it, it says three need to be solicited. So we can ask for three, we don't get three, we ask for three. You know, if, if we put it on the website and we get one, and it's not acceptable, then we just repost it, or then we can look, look at the policy. It's not really changing the policy as much as it's trying to get everyone noticed on it. Because what I see is as the, the issue, or what can become an issue, is the perception that maybe people are being selectively called.
Okay.
And this will just, here it is. If, if you don't wanna call us up, fine. Uh, as far as specifications, uh, clearly with any project, there's specifications, but it is no different than if I called a guy and said, "We want lights in the garage." You go over and you go, "It's twelve light panels, uh, how do you hook it up?" You know, soup to nuts, turn the switch on, the lights work, and every qualified electrician should be able to figure out the same, uh, thing. And if, if you wanna use, if, if your policy is to use, you know, whatever gauge wiring to hook these lights up, and that's off three thousand dollars more than this guy's, uh, as long as it all passes inspection, I think probably the lowest bid would be the one getting it. Uh, you know, I can't see getting into real specifics about the gauge of wires and switches, and I don't know how that would be possible to write that.
Lexi?
Wouldn't it, you put the proposal on the website? Wouldn't the people, the contractors or whatever, that wanted to respond to the bid, wouldn't they be allowed to go to the garage?
Well, yeah, well, that's the whole point of it. The point is.
And then they?
The point is, we're not putting, you know, a proposal means where we wanna put lights in the town garage, we wanna upgrade the lights to the town garage. Contact myself or Terry Stacy, and come down, we'll discuss it. Because if I call you on the phone, we're gonna discuss it. I'm not gonna sit there and read off a list of specifications and ask you to bid on the blind. I mean.
Is the description of work has to be consistent with what's on the web and what people see versus calling in.
Yeah.
Like Mitch was saying, you gotta come get an apple stat, you can't.
Yeah. Yeah, I, 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 yeah, absolutely. It is, it's the same thing. It's no different than what we're doing now except we're trying to welcome more people into it.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think it's good.
And what happened with Van Hullet, you know, was, was, I mean, the, the thing had been two years. And, you know, they've been working on that generator idea for two years.
Yeah, it's just a.
And so he said he wasn't contacted, the town says he was contacted, and, you know, he missed out.
Well, and this is just a way of, of looking at the current policy and just getting it out more, in front of more people. It won't change a single thing about how these bids between three and nine, ninety-nine have, have been done forever. It's just giving everyone the opportunity, if you're interested in doing work in the town of Shasberry, look on the website, because everything will be on there, everything above twenty-nine, ninety-nine. Because then we're getting into gravel and, you know, little, little things like that. And the other ones above ten thou- ten thousand above, that's still formal bids, formal openings and everything. And that, bids of that size, like the pump for the, uh, the, uh, the water pump for Twitchell Hill, I mean, that has real specifications, this is really laid out by, by, uh, the water department or whoever's gonna need this stuff. And we'll see, and we can tweak it as it goes along, but I think it'll just makes it clearer for everybody.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It's just, it's extra.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, it's going beyond what, what, what we're required to do, but I think it, it makes it a, a better system.
Yeah. Anything else?
Uh, we are going to have a VOTI inspection. Uh, it will be coming up, and we'll see how that goes.
Voluntary?
Yes, yes, well, they would be showing up unannounced if, otherwise, yeah. So they'll go through everything and we'll see where everything falls, and hopefully, uh, it won't be too bad. That's, that would be it.
Alright. I added, uh, to the agenda, uh, just maybe the, a poke for the select board members to start thinking about budget priorities and, um, what, what our ideas are about the upcoming budget, if there's any, uh, new spending that, uh, you think you might wanna do, or, uh, spending that you might wanna see cut. One of the things I had in mind when I wrote this, uh, was that part of, uh, Airport Road with the, uh, with the, the problem with the Daleys truck. I, I was wondering, do we need to think about paving that part of the road? Uh, we got some information this evening that says we need to monitor that situation further, but that's the kinda thing I want us to be thinking about, is where we might need to be thinking about, uh, uh, spending that we haven't done in the past. I would, uh, remind us that, uh, we have a, a pretty long to-do list for Howard Park that we generated earlier this year. Uh, we need to think about what, uh, chunks of that we wanna bite off. We also need to think about how we want to handle Howard Park in terms of, uh, uh, opening and closing it and, uh, the supervisor. Walt Merritt, who is our park supervisor, um, now, mainly he, his main job is mowing the park. And, um, I've started to wonder if we ought to think about, uh, having a park supervisor. I'd like to be, be Walt, I don't know if he wants to do it, but somebody who keeps an eye on the park as their job as opposed to spending most of their job riding a tractor, uh, which would probably involve, uh, you know, changing our, our, at least, budget items there and hiring out mowing and then having a line item for a, a park supervisor, uh, that sort of thing. But, uh, if anybody else has any, uh, things they wanna air right now, uh, I'd welcome those comments.
I don't have anything to add right now, uh, through the budget.
Alright, well, be thinking about it, because, uh, very soon, we're gonna be in budget season, and we'll be, uh, digging through, almost on a weekly basis, the, the five hundred lines of the, of the budget and deciding where we spend and where we cut.
Yeah, as I said, I'll have, uh, one to, hopefully everyone, the tax payments don't swamp my office this week, but, uh, uh, for everyone to look at over the weekend and the health increases.
Alright, well, that takes us to, um, other business. Is there any other business?
Nothing here.
Tim?
Ken?
Um, I was down, down clerk's office the other day getting some absentee ballots from my wife, and I see that Judy's doing everything with, with postage stamps. I think it'd be a good idea if we got her a postage meter. Save a lot of time. David and I were talking about it.
Okay.
I will look into the postage meter for you.
Alright.
See how much they cost and how they operate. She knows. Yeah, she does. And we do buy the pre-posted, when I was actually ordering all those pre-posted envelopes for Bill and that, I was wondering if there wasn't a cheaper way of doing this. Um, but that was kind of on a rush, so we have the, the bills for this year and next year that had to be bought, but we're kind of, kinda large bills from the post office for that.
So what does that, what does that do on the?
Well, they'll, they'll give you a scale, you can weigh your packages or anything, and it's all right there. It prints it right out of your stamp, right out of your envelopes for you.
Like the thing they have at the post office, where instead of licking thirty stamps, you just set it on there.
Yeah, you just put it out there, and it'll give you a little scale right, right out of your computer.
When you're around the money, it's wired, it's wired. You go online and, and, and it goes right to your bank and takes some money out of your bank, and then you instantly have some more, more money in the postage meter.
Supposed to give you like a hundred dollar increments or something?
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, David, if you could look into that, let us know what kinda cost we're talking about, maybe find out from.
There's a fee for it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's a fee for it.
Fee, but how much does it, how much is the fee offset with the savings? Because you're only actually paying for the weight of your item versus a thirty, forty, whatever, fifty-five cent, whatever it is now.
Yeah, along with that, let's find out from Judy what kinda volume we're talking about.
Yeah, because it's, it's this time of year, it's elections really for Judy, tax season for Bill. The rest of the year is, uh, I mean, you know, how many bills were we gonna mail out on this morning? You know, maybe twenty, twenty-five, every two weeks or fifty envelopes a month, maybe? So on an average month, maybe six, yeah, it may not be, because it's sixty to seventy envelopes a month on, on a average month, but two elections a year, that's a big one, and, and Bill's envelopes. We'll have to see, you know.
They, they, they'd probably have a break even pointer, let, you know, how mu- what your volume is, this is where you're gonna start breaking even, I'm sure they'll tell you.
Other business?
Vote tomorrow.
Oh, yes. Announcement, that would've been a good announcement.
I didn't think of, I just.
Yes, everyone should vote tomorrow.
Everybody should know that by now.
I had attended another meeting, and we had talked about, um, electronically posting the homestead.
Oh, the, the listers.
Yeah, and I was just wondering, is that gonna happen, or?
Yes, we're gonna have a demo. He's gonna come in and give us a demo here.
It, uh, other people have called me about that. I think the impression got out that this was something that he could put up right away. But this was seeking the board's final approval to start assembling it. It is gonna take a little time. He is gonna come in, uh, he's scheduled, uh, and give a demo of what it will look like online, and then it will go up online. But I think we're still a little bit out.
So, is the town still sending out the, uh, sending out, because I had one from a few years ago.
Sending out the?
The list.
The grand list?
Oh, the grand list.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with that having been done here.
Yeah, it used to come out like in a, yeah, the whole town, I know what you're talking about. Got one that, didn't we get one?
I didn't get one last year.
Maybe the year before.
A mailing of the grand list?
Yeah, I just, and it was mailed out?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it.
Well, i- if, if the town is interested in doing that. Oh, that's when it was done? Through our ways of, of simply posting it to the website, just the grand list, not what, not what Jim was talking about, which is far, far more detailed. I don't know, it's up to the, up to the select board about. I mean, I know, I know we started doing it in Sunderland a couple of years ago. We just, someone asked, and, uh, of course, we have somebody who, who does this for a living, so it took them, you know, half a day to post the grand list for us, but, uh, it can be done.
Well, I think in short order, we're gonna have something better on the website.
It will be better, because it'll, it'll show everything. It'll be quite a bit better. This probably is just easier just waiting another month or two. I believe that's the timeframe we're looking at, as he gets it together.
I think they put it out when the town's been reassessed. You have to do it after certain, certain criteria is met, that the town has to be reassessed.
Yeah. But people do, we've had inquiries, and I've heard other inquiries, you know, it's, it's public information, which is similar to what Jim was talking about, putting out. So some towns have just taken it as a habit to post the grand list annually. I mean, that's, that's, I know Sunderland does that. It's just a way of, people ask for it, so we just put it out there. But this will be far more in-depth than that, so it probably is worthwhile just waiting a little bit.
Well, thank you. Good meeting. I went to the website tonight, you know, I went to Shasberry website. It has everything there. I think it's really great, except it said that the meeting tonight started at seven. It didn't say it started at six-thirty. It said the public meeting started at seven.
That's a, well, that's a.
They had a little bit of.
That's a public hearing for the proposed bylaw.
But it, it says on the website, it didn't say that the, the regular meeting started at six-thirty.
I think I put two listings, one for six-thirty.
You know, this is another problem with reworking our webpage, because when you go on it, the first thing I saw too was seven PM, but it has six-thirty in the Google Calendar. It's, it's, we have, we're trying to readjust the website so that these things, when you, the first page comes out, this is far clearer than, than, than it is. Because I know is the thing that stuck out is seven PM in front of you. It's, it's a fault with the way the page opens.
Well, for one, our Google Calendar has, I think it has a default start for all.
Six-thirty, yeah.
Oh, six-thirty?
Yeah.
But then you say the agenda that you saw said seven, or was it the Google Calendar?
It said, it said November third, it said seven o'clock.
The public hearing.
Where, where did it say that?
Public hearing, it said seven PM, public hearing. But that's the line that was talking specifically about the hollow.
I mean, it has the, all the other select board meetings, you know, it said select board meeting, but this one said that there was gonna be a public meeting, but it said it started at seven. But it didn't say that the regular select board meeting started at six-thirty.
Alright, let's see where we went wrong here.
Nineteen hundred select board meeting.
Agenda, current agenda.
Okay, so that, that Google Calendar entry needs to be changed, because it, uh, the default time is six-thirty. And then the agenda that's posted. That's, uh, that's the wrong agenda, okay. Yeah, we had a little bit of confusion on the agenda earlier in the week, partly because I was traveling and Jen put it out, and then I got my changes to her late, so that's human error. But yeah, we're working on that kinda thing. Yeah, alright.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, as far as action items, everybody needs to put on their calendar that the Christmas tree lighting is on December thirty-four o'clock. I just noted that the, the SWIP, um, alliance business involves a lot of things, including education programs in the school. I guess, I don't know if there's an action there, I guess it's the alliance forums, the communication between the school will happen as part of that alliance forming, so.
Yeah, and that'll probably happen from whoever we contract to do it.
Okay.
And that's not just the schools, I mean, it's for the public at large, too.
It has to be the businesses of a certain size in your town, hotels and things.
Okay. Um, this ninety-day appeal process on the floodplain maps, David, uh, do you have things that you have to do there other than, I think we need to get the word out that this is happening?
Yeah, I, I think the biggest thing is, again, uh, get it prominently, display it on the website so that the few people actually in town who, who would be affected by this, you know, they have it.
Do we need to contact people who are being affected directly?
No, no, because for many towns, uh, even somehow I'm aware of, we're talking hundreds, hundreds of lives.
Okay, so we just have to put the word out on that. Alright, we've got a plan just to have a budget meeting on the seventeenth, starting at six o'clock.
Isn't it five?
No, we decided on six.
Okay, we changed that, because that was.
Because we don't go to, wanna meet that long.
Thank you.
Thank you, girl. Uh, we, uh, should continue to monitor the situation with Peckham relative to their plans with the pit on Airport and see if, if they're gonna stop driving there so much. We don't need to pave that, but if they are, maybe we should. To withdraw the request from the DRB, um, I guess, David, you were the applicant, so can you handle that?
Yeah, I'll just call Tom.
Let them know that, uh, that we're not gonna do that. And also, you're gonna look into, uh, the benefits of, and cost of a postage meter.
Who's, who wants to contact Peckham's? I, I think, I think we ought to designate somebody to do that. I'm willing to do it, but unless you or Dave wants to do it.
I'd love to have you do it.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, um, I never can remember if we need a motion to go into executive session. I think we do.
Alright. Motion to go into executive session.
Mitch moves that we go into executive session to discuss real estate. I will second it. And we will do that at eight fifty-seven.